Recording. Hello, we are here with Mark Fieldman and he's going to do an interview here with the Yamhill Advocate. A little bit about what's been going on in his life as well as you know, as it relates to the events into the Newburgh. School Board Saga, as we like to refer to it as. Mark or Mr. Philbin, however you prefer to be addressed. What can you tell us about this commercial that has been running? On televisions in the Amhill County, which quotes you as being opposed. To keeping Dave Brown and Brian Shannon on the school board.
Well, I think it's tradecraft. It really is an expression of the desperation. And the depths and the lack of, shall we say, ethics morality and a relationship with the truth. Because I've been pretty clear, consistent. I've been in the news multiple times regarding the situation in Newburgh. Regarding my engagements with Dave Brown and I've been very consistent in explaining that. That Newburgh is kind of a, it's a battlefront, so to speak, and that the current school board has been very interested in returning. The focus in school back to reading, writing, math and not things such as CRT or politically divisive ideology. Or who has what flag in the classroom and you know, we can quibble about whether they did it the right way or not. Or the issue is, is one side of this thing is over the top, if you will. So in addition to this commercial in which they took footage of me from KGW from an interview a month ago. And you can see it's me, my mouth is moving, but the words that they dubbed over don't match with, with the things I'm saying. And they launched that right here in what we call the middle week. So most of these zealous people have already voted. So the pro recall people and the ones who wanted to vote yes, a disproportionately high number of them have voted already. And you'll see this in election and in terms of mail in elections in Oregon, this tends to be the pattern. And then you'll have things where the pace of ballots being turned in gets slower. And then towards the last few days before the election, which I believe is the 18th, you'll see this flurry of ballots come in. And so it's a, it's strategic to try to depress that section of the voters that have not voted yet.
So just so everybody watching can be clear, the commercial for the recall of Dave Brown and Brian Shannon. Which features the video of you from that interview with KGW. The audio is not what you're saying, that somebody else speaking over your video.
Yes. And the words that they are speaking, they've created this narrative that I've already dispelled between coin six and KGW interviews. In which I believe some people thought that this was something where I met Dave Brown on the second. At a Republican event and then we know there's hatch this conspiracy and I pretty much dispelled that. And the, that's pretty much been reported on, but once again, this isn't about what they can get people to believe. This isn't about the truth. And what's worse is these people are lying to the people of Newburg and Dundee and Yamhill. And they are lying because they are trying to influence an election in, in towards an outcome that they believe is best. Rather than allowing the democratic process, a fair and open democratic process to proceed. I'm sure you're aware that the, the vote no on the recall campaign people who are in support of retaining these two board members. Had a huge percentage of their signs removed and that disappeared after they spent hours and hours going around the community, putting them up. And the strange part is, is that the mainstream media doesn't seem to be reporting on that. Taking down people's political signs in order to suppress their message is against the law. It is a violation of election law and if you're caught, you can be charged. So I find this whole thing fascinating that they can dub over my, or take my, our footage from KGW. And put in their narrative, dub over my voice. And then that the same media station KGW would put that on a local commercial. I would, I would definitely encourage any investigative reporter to look into that. Because of all the people that should have known, that wasn't something I would say. It would have been KGW who did the original interview. I think it was around a month ago.
Yeah. So when you first were interviewed about, I think it was over Thanksgiving weekend, you know, the holiday. There, an article came out which claimed that Dave Brown was trying to give you the job of superintendent over the Newburg School District. But if you closely read the article, it seems to imply that you were not up for consideration for superintendent. And yet the article also claimed that you were, which I found to be a bit inconsistent. Can you elaborate further on what it was that you actually said to them?
Well, it goes back to biased media beginning to, in the interview, because they started the interview saying. This is what you're doing. And then I kept saying, no, and here's how the process works. You can't be considered for a job that's not open yet. Then there, there is no superintendent posting in Newburgh. And the, the whole issue is, is there was a board chairman who simply reached out to me for verification. Because he was not getting good information from the very people who are charged to give it. And that is specifically the people in the central office at Newburgh. And I'm not here to speculate for their motivation. All I'm saying is the truth is easy to find in board. Whether it's a board chairman or members of the school board, they're not experts always on all the details of superintendent searches. Or employment law or human resources. And he was not getting the answers and he reached out to me because I have had a longstanding tracker. Of consulting for all kinds of school board members, teachers, principals in all kinds of districts, parents, students. And the reason that I do that is, is that there are people who are illegitimately motivated. Because they're pushing their agenda and ideology rather than telling people the truth.
Okay. So just so everybody can be totally clear, Dave Brown did not ask you or offer you the job. Of superintendent of the Newburg School District. Is that, is this true statement?
No, he did not. He asked about how would, what is the process for opening up and posting a position? And I've already explained this and I believe there is a whole board meeting or a series of board meetings in which they deliberated doing just that. I'm pretty sure they had interviews and things, at least I can recall looking for potential firms. And that is a normal part of business in public schools.
So can you give us more clarity on how that interview even came about in the first place? Did you reach out to them? Did they reach out to you?
Again, he reached out to me and he has, as in Dave Brown, he reached.
I mean, what I'm referring to as the article, the report from, was it KT or KGW first reached out to you?
Coin six and KGW within minutes of each other.
Interesting. Do you know how they learned about your conversation with Dave Brown?
That I do not know. I did not ask.
It's very interesting. So what's your thoughts on the situation in Newburgh now having been dragged into it?
Well, the, the, the issue is Newburgh is what I, what I would say is ground central for a, what we would call the culture war and control of schools. And, and the whole nature of what the role of schools are for, if you, you know, I had a chance, I, you know, obviously people are sending me all kinds of feedback. People were upset about the commercial and they're sending me Facebook posts for employees from Newburgh and people from the community, both for and against. And the, the thing is that you can see the battle lines have been drawn. Some people think that this ideology of critical race theory and, and the rainbow flags and. And, and teaching equity, that equity and, and our place in society is more important than learning to read or write. And you can, people can have opinions on both sides of that, but it, it sets up a conflict, especially in a, in a community such as Newburgh. Which is still largely rural and has probably a little more conservative, but also is on the threshold of the urban advance. And so it's natural that, that you would see some of this conflict going on in Newburgh. Now, the, the community of Newburgh voted and they asked, they voted for a change in the direction on the school board. And those school board members came in and they sought a new direction. And I believe if you, on objective review, people like Brian or Dave were, were trying to create policy. Which is really the only thing school boards have direct control of. They, they set policy. They authorize large purchases and they hire a superintendent. Those are really the three kind of main things that they do. And so they wrote that flag policy saying this will remove the issue of flags and how divisive it's been, how distracting it's been. And you couple that on top of COVID, things were not going well in the district. They lost well over, I think 100, 150 students. And this is before they terminated Brian Morlock. Brian Morlock sat by, in my opinion, while that bleed of students was going out and, and did not have a course correction or a change in direction. I'm not here to fault the man for that. You know, every superintendent works for a board and, and the previous board wanted him to move in that direction. Then the board changed. Well, the superintendent works for the board. If the board changes. It behooves a superintendent to sit down and, and begin to correct the course. Because it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. You don't hire a superintendent and think superintendent is just going to call all the shots. That does not happen.
So during the very last school board meeting, which was a couple of weeks ago. Because there's, there's not been some school board meetings like regularly occurring like they normally would due to all the drama that's been occurring. Brandy Penner, who is one of the school board directors, she accused you and Robert Hess. Who was applying to be a consultant for the school district in its search for a new superintendent. She accused you of colluding with Robert Hess to make you the new superintendent during that school board meeting. Is there any truth to that allegation whatsoever?
Interesting that she would say colluding and I did catch that by the way. And what a convenient narrative for her to try to push. I mean, after all, be prior to the election of the conservative side of the Newburg Board. She and her colleagues were, were doing just, or the exact same thing she would be accusing myself for Dr. Hesse. Again, it's, it's in education is a small world. Obviously I know Dr. Hess. But I was responding to, is there a recruiter that will be fair and open? To allow all candidates an equal opportunity to be, to be connected to a potential employer of the school board. And again, the two that they interviewed were, were ones that I thought would be more able to do just that. Because it is a huge problem when you are not allowing fair and open processes, which they don't. In this particular state and this particular time in which we have basically ubiquitous. Once, one side of the spectrum control over the major aspects of government. So our Department of Education, Department of OHA and Health, Governor's Office, the legislature, the courts. You know, I mean, the, the, the bottom line is there are fewer and fewer entities of government left. That are operating in the way, fair and balanced way that they used to where, you know, there were debates and you could disagree. And you could, you could argue the merits of a policy without being canceled or, or run out of your job. Or, or immediately fired by your superior in government. And so, I mean, let's just be honest, Kerry. You know, these are, these are not safe times for people to stand up or speak up. So you know, she is, it's a free country. She's entitled to have that belief. The issue is she stated it in a public meeting in a slanderous way. And I've never had a single conversation with her. So again, she was, in my opinion, out of line to say such a thing. Especially when I've been pretty consistent that I'm a superintendent now. See, we've had tremendous success. I'm running for governor and I'm heading up the school choice initiative. And I'm not sure a transition to a district as stable and peaceful as Newburgh would be in my best interest. So I want to be very clear on just how wrong that board member was. And just how much she's misjudged me and my motivation. And the, the thing is, I think ultimately though, she's done a real service because it's led to an exposing of, of a zealot group of people. Who do not care about truth. Instead there, they put out a, a commercial in which my voice has a similar sounding. It's not me, is dubbed over specifically to create a false narrative to affect the outcome of election. Now for me, that's pretty serious and it ought to be looked into. Because obviously I'm going to have a conversation with KGW and A and E. And I'm a little curious to know how the very, you know, media station that did the interview, which they took the footage of to Dover. Would then run that. Thirty second commercial, when if any station on the planet, any media outlet should have known that that is not something I would say. Having interviewed me and talked to me more than once, I would argue would be KGW. So here's my point, there's externalities of these behaviors. How are people in Newburgh going to have confidence in the media? Once this thing, you know, becomes aired out into the public. If, if you have to lie to, to disempower the side that you are opposing to affect an election. I think that that is a great expression of why you shouldn't be in power. So if they're going to lie about me and my position, that means they're going to lie to parents about their kids. They're going to lie about policy and, and outcomes. What, how can you trust a word they say? And if I was a parent or a voter in Newburg Dundee. I would argue that you only have one option now, and that is to vote no on the recall. Because a yes vote says, I want to be lied to. I'm okay with this. And I haven't met very many people, Kerry, that like being lied to. I should ask you though, to be fair, I don't want to presume your ethics. Do you like being lied to?
No. I would say that most people don't want to be lied to.
All right. Well, these people are straight up lying. They're lying about me. They're lying about who I am. They're lying about my motivation. And they're lying about these board members and they're lying about an entire half of the, of the Yamhill County, Newburg Dundee School District. That says, we don't want our kids learning this. 150 kids at $10,400, $500 a kid. You do the math is a lot of money that Newburgh has lost, far more than any of these lawsuits they're claiming or any of these. You know, buying out Joe Morlock's contract. I assure you that bleed of students is massively more expensive. And that is what Dave Brown and Brian Shannon were trying to stem. They were trying to get the division and controversy down, focus back on the core values that everyone agrees on, which is our kids. Now, I don't know, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, not that I'm choosing sides here, but I am choosing sides here. Dave Brown is, in my experience, a reasonable man. It doesn't, you don't have to agree with him to say that. And Brian Shannon, in my opinion, is reasonable. And reasonableness is what should be applied in a situation like this. Because you can't have leadership that isn't reasonable and communicable to most people. In other words, the majority of people go, well, agree or disagree, that makes sense. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. There's one more narrative that the social activists here in Newburgh have been spreading about you. And I'd like to have you a chance for you to address that. There's footage from a school event years ago where you're dressed in Elvis costume and you're doing some type of performance. And they say that you exposed yourself to a bunch of kids. I've looked at the footage. It's, you know, not the greatest of footage. It kind of, you know, it's hard to tell exactly what's going on with that costume that you're wearing. Could you elaborate further on that? I've heard that there's more to, more to, more to it than what's in that video.
Well, obviously you watched said video. Did, did it look like I was exposed? I mean, let's define that. Because here's the issue is that video was a difficult thing to live through considering the fact that. It was released to the public by people who I was really investigating and preparing to fire for malfeasance. And I had a choice. I can be self preserving in the sense of saying, boy, that would be a hard thing to live through. I think I'll do what I, is best for me. And I said, no. Having these people in power in the district would create outcomes that would be very detrimental to the district and the students that it serves. And so I stayed on and, and I took that hit. And believe me, it was thoroughly investigated because I went through the process. I was very open and honest about the whole thing. I filled in for a person in an assembly and the pants didn't fit well. That's all it is. And that is what it was, the TSPs to the teacher standards of practice, ethics investigation concluded and a whole bunch of other. You know, there was a Secretary of State audit on the finances of the district. I came out smelling like a rose. It was the right thing to do. And it's called leadership. A leader looks in the mirror and has to make very difficult decisions. Is this about me? Or is this about what we're trying to accomplish for the betterment of kids, students and the whole community? And I took that path that wasn't about me. And believe me, this state would be a lot better off if it was led by more people who take that path.
So just for clarity, the event in question where you did the performance, you were not originally supposed to be the performer. It was somebody else and for whatever reason, you had to fill in at a last minute is what I've heard. Is, is that true?
Very true.
Okay. So basically it sounds like everything that has been said by these, you know, the pro recall people in town as it relates to you. Is, is not true and had, or has been a gross distortion of actual fact.
Well, I think you're starting to see the same trend that I've been seeing for years, which is why I've taken the positions I've taken. It's why I'm running for governor. It's why I was the chief petitioner for the school choice initiative. And here's why. They had multiple people for that initiative that were going to sign on to that. And, and God bless the, the folks, bless their hearts because they're super good people. They're really motivated. They're trying to create options for, for kids and families. And I told them, you're going to need my name. And, and that, that statement became true. Because your home address gets pushed, pushed on all those petitions. And at the end of the day, people knew the cancel culture would come if their name was on that petition and their home address. It's called doxing. I'm sure you've heard. Yes. Yeah. Well, I believe that school choice initiative should go before voters. I think it's a natural right for parents to be intricately connected to their children's education and, and what that education looks like. There should be a process where parents are integral partners. And then in Newburgh, particular, what's your name, Ms. Penner, I believe. She, she would say the opposite of that. I mean, her position is, is that, you know, we leave education to the experts, not parents. And I don't know, I've raised, I've got, between my wife and I, we have nine children. I would argue that I have a little bit of experience raising kids. And I think that parents need to be intricately involved in the education of their kids and, and, and what kinds of things kids are learning. And, and how that interacts with them and their future and the, the values of our homes. These are natural rights. They perceive government. So in my school district in LC, I'll say it again, because we say it all the time. Our parents are our number one allies in the education of our students. That every parent is intricately connected in the process and all of them have a place. We get to know the parent. We get to know a little bit of where they're coming from and what their values are. And we're not going to judge them. We're here to meet them where they're at and, and try to support them. And so that they and their kids can have a great experience, even though there may be another family down the way that disagrees with that family and the way it's structured. It's not our place. Schools are here to support kids and create awesome and amazing educational outcomes. And I would argue that those priorities are not the priorities of certain advocates on the Newburgh School Board.
You've worked in education here in Oregon for a great number of years. I wanted to get your feedback on something specific to this group here in Newburgh. I'm not sure how many of the articles published on the Amhill Advocate you have read. But one of the first articles I published showed that Guadalupe Martinez Zapata, who is the current vice chair of the Oregon Board of Education. Is a very active member of this recall group. She has actually talked within the private Facebook group where they organized everything called Newberg Equity Education. She made a number of comments about how it was necessary to dismantle and rebuild America into a, a better, you know, in her view, a more equitable society. She made a comparison of the current state of the United States as an old car. That should be, you know, basically disposed of because it's, it's better to just build it something new than to try to repair something. That is, is old. That's basically what she compared it to. And another thing which I haven't published yet actually is that she has been act, she actively gathered signatures. For the recall against both Dave Brown and Brian Shannon. Here in Newburgh. Is it normal for the vice chair of the Oregon Department of Education? To be so deeply involved in the recall of school board directors?
It is absolutely 100% inappropriate for her at a high level state advocate for education of all students. For her to assign and impose by force and through manipulation and coercion, which is, and, and the use of her position and influence, which she clearly has done. Just so you know, I was familiar with some of this before you just announced it, but just so you know, you're not the only one who knows this. It's completely inappropriate. It is government serving itself, imposing its ideologies and beliefs on all people. And what she is saying by default is that any parent in Newburgh who says, well, actually I kind of like this country. She's saying that they're some kind of old tire, that they're, they're, they're to be cast off. It's no different than Hillary Clinton saying deplorable. And there is no greater callousness or arrogance or conceit. Or unethical, immoral imposition of power and, and influence. Then, then examples of that in which she can then say, this is the outcome that everybody who is anything that's valuable. Should have, and therefore I get to, even though I'm supposed to be here for all parents on that high position. I get to go and take a side and collect signatures while standing by and cheering while other. Shall we say successful superintendents like myself in LC are maligned as guardians of the antiquity. Here, here's the reality. Okay. And I'm just going to tell you the truth and I, I hope you don't light on fire. But I really want to make this an important point. One of the reasons I'm running for governor is because I have cut my teeth telling my staff, my parents, my students consistently the truth. Over all of these years, I've told them the truth about COVID. Remember, according to the CDC, all schools had to close. I did my own research. I came back and said, I think they're wrong. And here's the truth. The truth is we can operate safely and we did. We were the only school open K through 12 during COVID. Very inconvenient for Governor Brown. And then we didn't have any outbreak. Remember, these are the experts. These are the people like you just described or the, or Ms. Penner on the board. Now she would, she was parroting all the expert stuff. The experts were wrong. They, they have consistently been wrong through this whole pandemic. They told us vaccines would solve this issue. They encouraged everybody get them, even though 80% of people have some kind of adverse reaction normally in a normal, clear thinking time. They would have just said, well, these are experimental. We're just going to protect the vulnerable. But now they pushed it off onto everybody and anyone who said or asked questions, they got canceled. How dare you? You're putting everybody, or is you're a murderer? Now here's the comedy, these very same people, this last week, people like Anthony Fauci. Just said, well, you know, we've been telling you that if you get two shots or one shot of Johnson and Johnson, you're immunized. Well, they just changed that. Now they're saying you're now, you're no longer considered, or excuse me, vaccinated. You're no longer considered vaccinated unless you get a booster. These people need to quit. They have been lying about vaccines and their efficacy. They've been lying about the severity of COVID on children. It's right there in the newspaper today. The CDC director came out and contested Sotomayor, the Supreme Court Justice's statement that there's. The CDC director came out and contested Sotomayor, the Supreme Court Justice's statement that there's a hundred thousand kids on ventilators. Et cetera, et cetera. And the CDC itself had to come out and say, well, there's only like thirty four hundred kids, you know, nationwide. In the hospital and forty percent of them aren't in the hospital because of COVID. They just happened to get tested and have it. Uh, now, these are the same people that six months ago were telling us the opposite. So Carrie, you tell me who I'm supposed to believe. How about I'm am I supposed to believe these experts who every six weeks have a completely different changing view? Or my own experience based on my own research, because I'm a discerning, clear-thinking, intelligent school superintendent who has a duty. To serve kids and families and tell them the truth. In LC, we told people the truth. That's why we stayed open. That's why our kids had a better experience for COVID rather than having to stay home. It's why we we uh were able to support kids' mental and emotional health better because they were connected to school, unlike. Our neighboring school districts, kids killed themselves, Carrie. Kids died.
That's terrible.
Died.
That's terrible.
That died because our leaders lied to us because they had an agenda. And they wanted to coerce enforce us into uh accepting things that ultimately weren't true. You have to allow people to discern. You have to allow people to engage, even if you don't agree with their conclusions. And I did that in LC and uh this this fall, I told parents the truth about Governor Brown mandate. They responded by attacking me. Very similar pattern, saying things that weren't true. And Governor Brown didn't fare very well in that exchange. Because OD had to admit to all the superintendents, nice and quiet in an off the record meeting. That um all of the ADA uh um. Or all of those things that I had stated regarding the option for an ADA accommodation, Americans with Disabilities Act accommodation. Were true and had to be granted. Isn't that fascinating?
Yes.
I told parents the. So these people don't want me telling the truth. So what I did is I said, I'm going to run for governor because they're going to be coming in six months and saying they don't want me telling the truth. And running for governor is great because you have a webpage and you have this big media opportunity to raise the profile for telling the truth. So I've been telling the truth all along about all of this stuff. I told Dave Brown the truth. Here's how it works. Here's my recommendation. If that's the outcome you want, I'd recommend you contact or put out an RFP and and contact these people. Now, is that unethical, Carrie?
Doesn't sound unethical, no. So yeah, it's safe to assume then if you were elected as governor of Oregon. You would probably not be shutting down these schools under the same circumstances as Kate Brown has. You would instead apply the same approach that you have used in your own school district.
Well, absolutely. So in LC, we have been right over and over again. We were doing isolation and test is what we called it. But after the government sent OSHA to my school and they did their investigation, all they wanted to know three weeks in was about. The three to five day isolation rule and test. They asked for all my emails that I'd sent out to parents, which I gave them. And then they told me how they were like shocked and I and and it's the gal that does Salem, Linda Patterson's her name, the Salem low shop. Feel free to call her, okay? And she said, hey, Mark, your correspondence with parents is amazing. It's so different from any of the other districts we visited or investigated. And I said, well, what do you mean, Linda? And she said, well, none of the other school superintendents. Are communicating with their parents this way. I said, well, what do you mean? Like giving them good advice, telling them, giving them information and telling them. How they can be an ally and and keeping our kids uh safe and our school open? And she said, yes. Now, that is scary that we are in a place in this day and age. Where they would be so shocked that a superintendent would tell parents, hey, here's what we need everybody to to know and be able to do. Please work with us. We even told parents, if you can't, you need a test, we've got them. My school had tests. OHA responded by refusing to send me more tests. They said I was abusing them. And then they come out six weeks later and implement tests to stay. Now, Carrie, how am I to believe a single word that OHA or OSHA or Colt Gill in the Department of Education say? I want to be able to trust them. I want to be able to work collaborating with collaboratively with them. I want to be able to engage. In in real meaningful dialogues so that we can drill down to the truth to create good. Policy that can be replicatable in all school districts. I I would love to do that, but I'm not sure I'm allowed to do that. And help me tell you why. I recently just received notice that in our professional association of coalition of Oregon school superintendents. I am now under investigation for undisclosed reasons. Does that sound strange to you?
Does it does.
Um, you know how many years I've been investigated this school year, Carrie? How many? It's June thirtieth or uh, this is my third time. So I did suggest Greg Hawkins of COSA that we have a new rule because they've created new rules and I would argue they were just for me. So for example, they created a series of standards that all COSA members must follow to include any standards not listed. Did you hear what I just said?
Yes.
So what standard you must follow as well as any other standards that aren't listed. Carrie, if they're not listing the standards, how do we know how to follow them?
Sounds very difficult. Sounds like they can just make up whatever they want.
Would you like me to send you a copy of said standards?
Absolutely.
Correspondence.
Sure.
And and here's the thing, if you are an investigative reporter and I've seen your work. And I don't know if I should say this or not, but uh um I'm gonna just tell you the straight up truth. I was so relieved and refreshed to read the detail. Of coverage and information they provided for people, all while apologizing for how much it was so much. You were like, well, there's a lot of information. You know, but if you can stick through it and read it all, you might find it interesting. Um, I would like to see more of that work and I want to encourage you to do it and I would like to keep you uh well and well informed and well stocked with. All of this goofy um um uh information that people might be interested in because I don't know about you. But imagine if I ran a school in which I said to teachers and students, you are required to do these things plus anything that may not be listed. Carrie, tell me how that would go over.
Uh, if it was me personally, I mean, I wouldn't know what I'm supposed to be reacting to because there's nothing. Specified, nothing written down. So how do you know a rule, you know, how do you avoid breaking a rule that doesn't? Exists until somebody decides to make it up on the spot.
Well, let me explain it to anybody who may someday watch this. Our progressive um uh overlords would argue, here's how they would answer that, but you should know. That's what they would say. If you're a good person, you would. And the thing is, when you get a standard like that, that is what we call an impossible standard. And human beings don't work that way. People need to be told the truth. There they need to have leaders that advocate and fight for them. They need to have results that are genera- or that that result or that are generated by that advocacy and that relationship. That that students and parents can see in my school district. Not every parent agreed with me staying open. But we had like, uh, you know, all but like three kids showed up on the first first week of school. And by that, after a week or two, a hundred percent were showing up. So even parents that disagreed, they they were nervous. They they held back to wait and see. And then they believed their own eyes. Well, everybody seems to be okay. No outbreaks. Okay, kids go to school. That's called results that people can see. That's what a public school is supposed to provide for parents and kids. That's what our government is supposed to provide for the people, all of us. And uh the the I cannot underestimate or or under I cannot under stress the value. Of results people can see because that's what builds confidence. In in any kind of public entity, whether it's a school or whether it's governors, governor or OHA or any other public uh agency. Without confidence, you will have controversy.
Uh, going back to the subject of school shutdowns. I have read online that um there has been uh. The the sorry, I'm trying to get their name. The Portland Association of Teachers. Uh, has been negotiations over this winter with the district. And they're currently moving towards shutting down again and having distance learning because the district. Is claiming widespread emotional exhaustion that is to justify the cutback on the time. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, let's think about this. We uh have this COVID thing in which we've lied to the people enough to that no one knows what to believe and and. Most people are afraid. And then you politicize that situation where public unions come in. And they say things like, how do we get advantage? This is the same public union that said maybe we should move to four days in high school. So that people, you know, teachers can have a day off. And at the end of the day, what it is is it's the teachers serving themselves. But let me throw, let me give them a little credit. They're actually being honest about being overwhelmed about the stress that they're feeling. Okay, there's no accountability for kids or kids behavior. They they moved the remove the police, they removed the SRD, they removed all kinds of uh. Of of what we would call consequences for bad student behavior. And as a result, and then you throw a pandemic. And a politicized one on top of that, in which nobody knows what to believe, except people think if you get COVID, you've either done something wrong or you're gonna die. I've heard those words more times than I can count. I cannot tell you how many times I've sat people down and said. Hey, I understand why you feel that way. Let me tell you about the truth. Here's what we're doing in LC. Here's why it works. Here's why you don't need to be afraid. You just need to be educated. You just need to know what and what you need to do to keep yourself safe. And understand if you get COVID, there there you've done nothing wrong because eventually the vast majority of people. On the globe are going to get COVID. We've seen that with all kinds of illnesses. That's called the common cold. Remember? Common cold, remember that? A lot of people used to get it. And uh we didn't shut things down for that. But here's the thing is on top of that, then the school administration, the Oregon Health Authority says. If you're not vaccinated, you don't belong here. I mean, the superintendent, public superintendent of instruction, what's his name? Uh, I think his name is Guadalupe and in Portland Public. I was in a meeting with him in which he said, um, you know, we can have unvaccinated people working. This is super tense meeting on Zoom. So I had to chime in and I said. Hey, by the way, uh, I'm unvaccinated. Are you guys okay to stay in this meeting? And they all went like this. Okay, it's a Zoom meeting, man. The virus has not yet evolved to go through the the screen. Um, and I remember I got off that meeting completely, completely saddened because I could have told you eight months ago. What those poor teachers were going to be feeling like today. So if you if you X nay twenty or thirty percent of your staff, which they did, and you create. A lot labor shortages, especially in substitutes, and you don't have enough bus drivers to drive bus. And uh so that the one, the the people who are remaining and willing to work are are, you know, they're they're stressed out. They're having to combine routes. They're having to combine classrooms. They're having to work through their preps because they don't have enough subs. You have to cover for for your colleague who's homesick. I mean, think about it. This is called bad leadership. And it was all avoidable. This is something our government is doing to us and not for us. I hope all that makes sense.
It it does make sense, I think. Um, I think education is probably going to be a really big, you know, issue here for the next. Uh, number of elections, not just for the governor, but every other position. Uh statewide. And I think that, you know, the information you're putting out there is probably very helpful for. A lot of the voters uh here in Yamhill County as well as elsewhere in Oregon, for them to be hearing. Uh, especially from someone with your experience and the position that you're in.
Well, think about this. What if Portland Public solved the problem? By inviting the unvaccinated back to work now that we know that vaccines don't give us the protection. They finally conceived that. And what if they solve the problem by saying, you know, we've really done this wrong? And uh uh we've done a poor job. And and then they started telling people the truth that that schools are not substantial sources of COVID outbreak. As proven by LC School District and LC Charter School and many others. Even Anthony Fauci came out and said that last week, that schools are not a significant source. Uh, Dr. Sidlinger during Governor Brown's press conference two weeks ago said the same thing. So and these were the same people that said schools would be a source of outbreak a year prior. So you you can see where I'm coming from. Portland Public should not take the tactic of. Of teachers then align together to serve themselves because they're exhausted. What they should all do is say, we have a duty to serve our students. And we need to get it back together. So we we need to invite our colleagues back who we have done wrong to and mistreated. Because we were lied to by our government. They need to apologize. They need to bring people back. They need to increase the 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 folks willing to work in the subpool. And you can do that in a variety of ways. It starts with this. You are safe to come back to work and you will not be canceled if you disagree. That single step would change everything for the fortunes of that district, but that's not what's going to happen. What's going to happen is the teachers' union will most likely vote to serve itself. And you know who loses in that? That what's the externality of that? Carrie, you want you you tell me the demographic that's going to lose the most? When the teachers do that. I'll leave it up to you to I'll and uh we'll see. We'll see if you can get it. It's a trick. It's not a trick question. There there is a group of people, by the way, the least able to advocate for themselves. That are going to suffer the most when the teachers' union in its desperation and exhaustion votes to serve itself. And which one is that?
Students.
Yes, very, very demographic. Portland Public School System exists to serve. This is why I'm running for governor. If parents, if you want stability in your schools and you want someone who's going to tell you the truth. And and give you information you can use when 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 important things like COVID come up. And empower you and and set policies that you as a parent can see benefiting you and your family. Okay, creating opportunities, creating hope for the future, then vote Mark for Oregon. And and I cannot stress it enough. These problems are completely solvable. And they're solvable when we decide to elect the right leaders.
Uh, I as as talking about the teachers' unions. Uh, I've heard that you had a lot of, you know, negative experiences in your, you know, past with. Uh, union uh stuff as well, which we won't get into, but on that note here in Newburgh, I've published, you know, an article. And evidence that shows that the president and the vice president of the Newberg Education Association, Jennifer Schneider and Drew Gallagher. Uh Gallagher are very uh involved in the recalls against Dave Brown, Brian Shannon. As members of the Newberg Equity Education Group. In fact, uh, I personally saw Andrew Gallagher make a post. Onto the recall uh Brian Shannon Facebook page, which he immediately deleted and then reposted. As the page itself, which leads me to conclude that he is actually the person who is the administrator of the page. Is it normal or usual for a teachers' association, a teacher's union uh to be trying to recall? Uh, the school board directors to the extent that the vice president is operating the Facebook page. And they're hanging flyers all over the school campuses with the logo of the teachers' union and a black power fist. On it as well as putting the same logo on a postcard, so along with that black power fist into all the mailboxes. Of all the teachers in the entire district. Is that normal?
It's it's completely not normal, but for progressive ideologues. Who who believe in this greater, braver future in which we destroy this country. And rebuild it in whatever their image is. I mean, this is, you know, this is a a classic example of hubris. Um, uh, supported by complete, no offense, ignorance. I was going to say idiocy, but that would have been inappropriate and unprofessional. So we're just going to say ignorance. It is it is inane, these folks, how shallow their thinking is. In which they believe that their one way, their one view is acceptable. And here, let me explain it this way. These are leaders in the union engaged in political activity and um and ultimately. They're creating a culture of division in which not every teacher is going to feel comfortable. Engaging in the uh process in the union. Imagine if you're a conservative and you said, well, I disagree with this position that you, my the union leaders are taking. How how is your experience going to be in that union when they don't allow for any other um perspectives or views? Which is why, again, I keep saying this, we need different leadership. Imagine if we elected a governor that allowed everyone to think freely. To engage in a pursuit of the truth.
Uh, oh, on 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 the another, no, also related to your history and your experience as superintendent. Um, I published a a series of screenshots which showed a school counselor by the name of Joshua. Uh, Reed, I believe is his name. He was commenting on a current student who he was counseling. For mental health issues and talking about some of their troubles inside the Facebook group, Newberg Equity Education, which has six hundred people in it. Mostly teachers, but a lot of people. Mostly teachers, but a lot of people who are not teachers. And uh, I showed, I sent that screenshot to Joe Morlock, who's a superintendent, and I said, this is a FIPPA violation. What are you gonna do about it? And I got nothing back. And about a month goes by and he's finally terminated. Uh, if you saw something like that, what would be the 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 steps for dealing with a school counselor um, posting about a student who they're counseling, uh, private mental health issues in a Facebook group of six hundred people?
All right, well, a couple of things. I don't want us to get too far off in the weeds here, Carrie, because I mean, you're you're giving me some stuff that gets a little bit out of my regular purview, but you know, I, um, I, you know, I'll go ahead and give you an answer to this and then then maybe you and I can talk again or do another interview. Um, by the way, you are a wealth of of information and I really appreciate the the length that you've gone through because what you just said was very, very detailed. But in general, if um, if employees are uh, uh, disclosing information that's not supposed to be disclosed, you you would want to engage with that employee. You would want to look into it. You would want to find out the nature of the motivation behind the error. And if it was an honest mistake or et cetera, you would deal with it one way. And if it was a deliberate disclosure of confidential information, you would deal with it another. The the difference is, is you would have to have a culture in which there's confidence that that the proper pathway would be applied. And and what what's the externality? The externality is, is that we want parents and students to have confidence that their confidential information will be appropriately protected. And you have to believe in that outcome. And I'm not sure in the scenario you just outlined that that was a common value. How am I doing?
Yep, sounds, sounds uh, on point to me. I mean, it alarmed me that when I saw school counselors sharing private information about the students that they're counseling and talking about, you know, their mental health issues in a group of six hundred other people, all of whom, you know, many of whom know that student. Other parents who may have, you know, kids who are friends with that student. It just seemed uh, as inappropriate as, you know, holding a drag show where a current high school student performs in drag, which has also occurred here in this district, uh, no less at a uh, children's dance studio. Just owned by Kristen Stoller, which is also a cola vendor for the, uh, I guess it's called the Shahalem Online Learning uh, something. Uh, from my understanding, it's an after school program uh, used by children who are being, who are do doing distance learning from school. I think it was created just prior to the co- uh, to COVID, but it was, it's used a lot from my understanding during the COVID lockdowns. Um, just uh, so much stuff here that's seems to me to be completely inappropriate for happening in a school district. And i- i- it's not just individual events, but just so many different types of things that seem blatant violations of just basic common decency. Yes, but also state laws, school district policies, and nothing was ever done to anybody to help hold them accountable for these things.
Well, and you know, I'd say that's a lot of what you just said is is new information for me. The 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 way that I would 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 kind of frame it, you know, whether it's Newburgh or any other school district, I mean, um, you know, everybody has a right to their views and their opinions and their values and their beliefs. I mean, that's an American value. That's an American premise. It's something that's endowed in our constitution that we're allowed to have. The question is, is you have to go back as a community and say, you know, what is the purpose of the school? And what are we trying to accomplish? And what come in the majority of reasonable people agree on? And that's kind of the lens that I would recommend. Um, you know, we get back to statewide in terms of our leadership, whether it's in schools or counties or um, or in the governor's office, for example. So, um, you know, like I say, I don't want to get too far off in the weeds. Um, you know, um, some of what you just said explains a little bit of why there's so much hypersensitivity, I think, about this issue in Newburgh, uh, because I was not aware of some of that.
Yeah, there there's definitely probably a lot of things, you know, that are not being published that are happening in this town and uh, it's it's too much for a lot of people to read. But as long as people get the gist of it, you know, the general sense. Uh, my conclusion has been that uh, there's a very toxic environment in the school district. It was not created by the 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 newly elected school board directors, nor was it done by Brian Shannon and Dave Brown seems to have really been created by the teachers themselves in the district and ancillary groups. That's just been my conclusion of it. Um, and that's just kind of something I'm starting to, you know, as I look into other groups around the school, uh, excuse me, around the state. As other parents from other areas reach out to me about their stories because they're they're reading my writings about Newburgh. You know, it seems to be something that's commonly happening across the state. A lot of what's happening in Newburgh is not unique to Newburgh. Um, it's actually happening in many other districts as well. And I'm sure that's probably not too surprising for you to hear.
Well, look how some of these players have treated people like me who simply tell the truth. It's truth they don't want told. And so they seek to cancel. They make fake commercials. They collude with powerful entities all the way up, as you have mentioned, to the Department of Education Board, um, all the way down to uh, um, people within the community and um, and and then it's about the narrative. And it's about silencing. It's about uh, uh, colluding to force people to accept one way of seeing the world rather than that wonderful process where um, we can have opposing views but agree to disagree, which used to be the common norm. And that norm is being undermined. And I would really strongly recommend and argue that we need to elect leaders, whether it's school board members like Dave Brown or Brian Shannon, who obviously were elected to change the course of things as you just outlined. Um, and now look how they're being treated by these same people. It is wrong. And so I I would encourage anyone that's asked me, and I've had many in this last week, just today even. People email me, text me, you know, well, should I vote? I say, vote no on the recall. That's my recommendation, Dundee community member. Since you asked, I'm telling you my opinion and and that's my truth. And it's truth rooted in um, uh, sound, sound reasoning and my experience with real people um, such as Dave Brown, Brian Shannon. So I think they're very reasonable gentlemen. They're not perfect. I think they'd be the first to admit that. But I do believe, ardently believe that the two of them genuinely want to turn the school culture to a place where ideas can be engaged in. And then uh, people on all sides of of whatever the issue is can amicably agree to disagree. And then, you know, go take in the football game and 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 get excited about the homecoming or the prom or some of these things that bring us together and and unify us without trying to assign bigoted or racist um, or or untoward um, uh, meanings behind what we would call traditional um, community things. Things that traditionally like football or volleyball that that have brought parents and 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 people together. Um, and and I'm thinking about it. They've even politicized rodeo. I mean, where where is the limiting principle here? The, we used to be able to allow people to to pursue their own interests, their thoughts and their values. And even though we disagreed, we used to respect that and say, well, that's within their purview. They can structure their life or set their course to their their here based on uh, their own uh, proclivities. And as long as they don't tell me how to live my life, I won't tell them how to live theirs. That used to be the value. Strongly recommend that we get back to that. So, you know, that's my two cents. Anyway, um, I know we're getting a little long here, just in case you end up
Uh, to to wrap it up, um, I just like to ask if you were elected as governor, what are some things that you would try to do to improve the, you know, the culture within the schools and just raise the bar?
Well, the first thing you do is you um, um, put as you put in a different set of leadership in the Department of Education. So the governor is the state superintendent of education. They appointed deputy, in this case, it's Colt Gill. But I would obviously put something, someone else in, and I would get back to the things we all agree on. I have yet to meet a single progressive parent. I would argue even Ms. Penna, I think that's her name, the one that was so unfair and and un- uh, unkind to me. I would argue that even she thinks it's good, it's good for kids to learn to read and read well. And that's what you do is you start on what is gonna, what what value positions can we take as a state entity regarding education that people from all areas of the political spectrum would agree on and have common ground on. And that is the value of kids learning to read. And so you you have to get all this other divisive stuff out of this. So it's not equity that is the number one outcome, which is the current value in the Department of Education. It ought to be getting every kid past the finish line. Recognizing that some will get there sooner than others, but if we do our job and we're diligent and we care about each and every student, that every student by twelfth grade will get to that threshold that students need to get to, to be able to function in society with reasonableness and grace. And but right now we have leaders that say that that that's that's wrong because some kids will will get there sooner or faster or have more competence than others and that's inequitable. Well, I don't know if you know this, but see, that's the wrong lens because if you have a race of one a hundred thousand people, not all a hundred thousand across the finish line at the same time. The goal is that all a hundred thousand run the race and finish. And remember, in our awesome American society, and I know this as a cross country coach for years in my younger days. Um, I noticed in cross country and the reason I love coaching it is people cheered loudly for the folks that came in in the front. They cheered consistently for everyone that came in through the middle. But you know, Carrie, who they cheered the loudest for in every single cross country meet I ever attended and coached. I'll let you fill in the blank. Who do you think they cheered the loudest for?
The kids coming in last? Trying to finish?
Yes, because cross country is hard. And it's it it takes guts to put any kid, regardless of their skill or talent level for any kid to to run that cross country race. It was about cheering for every kid that was able to get across the finish line. Some much, much took much longer than others. And every now and then a kid would fall down or sprain their ankle. And you know what they would do? Other people would come in and get under them and then they would help them across the finish line. That's the kind of society and school culture that that we will build under my tenure as governor. And I can't think of 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 a of an outcome that would bring us together better than a culture that's built just like that analogy across country where we cheer loudly for those who who run the race quickly and effectively and competitively. We we continue to cheer for everyone in the middle that comes through because it's such an accomplishment to even participate in that that beautiful race. And then for those who either need help and we cheer the loudest because we know that they have probably more challenges in some ways, or they have less skill, or maybe they weren't in as good a shape. But they have the tenacity to run the race. And that is what it's all about. In in this beautiful country called the United States of America, it's the legacy of Oregon. It's how Oregon came to be. And we need to get back to our universal Oregon values. And that's what we'll do when I'm governor.
Thank you so much for your time, uh, Mr. Philman. I appreciate you answering my questions and spending this, I think it's about an hour we've been discussing. And I wish you luck on your campaign.
Well, and thank you for your diligence and and the massive amount of detailed research that you've done. I'm just gonna encourage you in that journey. I wish, I wish I could have spoke more about some of that, but obviously it's not within my purview. But um, I look forward to reading about more of that as you report on it. So thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.